Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our City Council meeting of July 14th, 2025. Before we begin, I'd like to have a moment of silence on behalf of a Newburyport citizen who recently passed away and I know is well-known to many, including people in this room. Myron Moss, aged 82, passed away recently on June 20th. Born in Brooklyn, so not a native Newburyporter, but he lived in Newburyport for the majority of his life and he had an attachment both to Brooklyn and to Newburyport that never waned. He was a lifelong teacher, began his teaching career in 1970 in Brooklyn, New York, accepted a position at Newburyport High School, moved his family north to Massachusetts, taught English for 30 years, is remembered fondly by his students, and particularly for his inspiration to help them engage in writing and critical thinking. And he was a born storyteller, also a relentless entrepreneur, opened West Newbury House of Pizza in the late 70s, ran a clam shack on the beach at Plum Island, and was also a successful real estate developer. Retired in 2001 and continued involved with the teaching profession as a member of the Massachusetts Teachers Union, volunteered for a number of our local activities, including the nonprofit organization Community Services of Newburyport and also the Friends of the Newburyport Public Library. So I just want to take a moment to remember him. I believe he was a teacher, at least of Mayor Riordan, and I think also perhaps Counselor Lane. So let's remember him in our thoughts tonight. Thank you.
Please join me in the prayers. I'd like you to flag the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if the clerk could be so kind as to call the roll?
Counselor Wright.
Here.
Counselor Zee.
Here.
Counselor Donahue.
Here.
Counselor Granis.
Here.
Counselor Harmon.
Here.
Counselor Khan.
Present.
Counselor Lane.
Here.
Counselor McCauley.
Here.
Counselor Preston.
Here.
Counselor Shan.
Present.
Counselor Cameron.
Here.
Thank you. That would get us to late files.
There are two late files. The first is an order gift acceptance from Friends of Newburyport Trees for $15,000 and a communication, the mayor's memo on the Ad Hoc Committee for Water Infrastructure Projects.
Motion to waive the rules and accept the late files? Second, discussion? Hearing none. All the -- Counselor Donahue? Yep.
Yeah, so I just wanted to point out that we've been getting in a lot of trouble for the late files and with the gift acceptance from the -- is it for the trees?
Yeah.
Is that time-sensitive? Is that truly an emergency? I guess is my main question on that.
I don't know if anyone from the administration wants to -- or Counselor Preston, Counselor Zee?
Administration. So, yeah, so I actually spoke to the member of the Tree Commission that was looking to submit this particular donation, and they do -- this actually does -- if you could leave the door.
We need to keep the door open for public meeting access. Thank you.
So they do need -- they -- yes, it is, in their opinion, urgent to get this in so that they can prepare themselves to plant these trees in the fall.
Thank you. Counselor Zee, anything to add or?
Just two things. One is, it's just a vote to accept the late file, not to do an emergency or anything like that, so we can certainly refer it to committee. The other thing is, I agree with the Ward Two Counselor, but I would just say my take is that the line is when the packet's published, to me. That is my opinion, so because the packet has to adhere to the 48 hours, if it makes it into the packet and it's a late file, then it's an internal business thing as far as what our deadlines are based on our rules. So that's going to be kind of be my take going forward. The on-the-desk late files are, unless they are, I think, very necessary, would be a challenge going forward. So that's my position. Thank you.
Thank you. And just to note for information, the clerk and I have talked about tightening that up and being more cognizant of that. So Counselor Preston?
Yeah, I just want to add one thing I forgot to say, actually. So just for the record, this was submitted several days earlier. They originally came to me asking me to submit it. Because of the changeover in the Finance Director position, they were worried it was going to get slipped sort of through the cracks. And, you know, after some consultation, we said it really should go through the administration as opposed to coming in through me. But they did actually have this in several days ago. It's just how it moved through the system that actually made it a little bit of a late file. It's really not on the Tree Commission. Okay.
Okay. So, hearing no further discussion, we would do a voice vote, motion to accept these two late files collectively. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Thank you. Public comment? And again, if we could keep the door open a little bit more than that, I know it's hot everywhere. You don't want to -- and for anyone remotely, if you can raise your hand as we're taking public comment, happy to take public comment remotely. If nobody's raising their hand and I don't see any hands raised, we'll just have an in-session comment, so. And we would start with Jerry Mullins. So name, address, up to two minutes on a matter on the agenda.
tend to ramble. Jerry Mullins, 7th Parsons Street over in South End. I noticed in the listings, as is the brand-new development that's going to be a major one for our -- prument for our downtown, is the 47 to 52 Merrimack Street proposed plan. And as I know, it works its way through the -- our volunteer boards, and there's discussion on height and dimension and such, and I'm not -- certainly not worried about the residential units above. The thing that I'm really concerned about is the first-floor commercial businesses. This is going to be a mixed-use, much like the rest of our downtown. And all I keep thinking is Merrimack Landing. Now, for people of long residence here, Merrimack Landing is in a choice spot right across from the firehouse, and yet it's because of the elevated walkway and the covered walkway, which is so much different than the rest of the downtown, it became a death nail for businesses that would go in there. They just wouldn't last. And so I saw that the initial design plans, which has front-facing businesses, which is tremendous, but one thing that they may have tendency as they work their way through is that they may try to cheapen it or try to do something that's a little bit different from the downtown. It should be something that's cohesive so that businesses and consumers will work their way from the historic downtown and work their way, even though it's not even historic, will work their way and those businesses will be prosperous instead of being a death nail if something is cheapened or is modified where it's not -- it's different from the rest of the thing. And of course, with happy businesses comes happy revenue for the city. So I just wanted to know, as you see this, this is going to become more prominent as it works its way through, we really would like to see the City Council get behind this and put some excellent positive contributions toward it. I saw that the project manager, Nick Cracknell, he was a former planning director here, so he knows the sad story about Merrimack Landing, so.
Thank you, Mr. Mullins. Appreciate that. Next would be Lisa Medina Smith. And again, two minutes, name and address and two minutes on something on the agenda. Thank you.
Lisa Medina Smith, 175 Story Ave. So my comment is on the Water Ad Hoc Prioritization Committee. So I want to first thank the administration, the council for basically recognizing that water infrastructure is a top priority. That said, I wanted to make sure it was really clear on what the outcomes of this committee are meant to be, given there is some overlap with the council's role and the Water and Sewer Commission with regards to their prioritization process. I saw mention of an action plan and recommendation in operating an advisory position, but advising who? Are we advising the council as part of the CIP? Are we advising back to the Water and Sewer Commission? Are we advising the administration on our recommendations on where we take a closer look? I think all of that needs to be clarified, and I also think there needs to be very concrete deliverables that they are delivered and on what timeframe, and that should be clarified as part of this process. I do worry that there is some overlap with existing boards, so I also want to challenge if this is the only way to meet the desired outcomes around some of the tensions around the prioritization. Is there another opportunity to look into like workshopping with the Water and Sewer Commission or with the administration or a combination of the three bodies? Whatever the outcome is, we should make sure we look into all alternatives when we decide that. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Beth Trock?
Beth Trock, 144 Low Street. I'm also speaking about the Water Ad Hoc Committee. I would like to encourage you to include residents on that committee. I looked at the list, there was a lot of people, but I didn't notice residents on it in the ordinance, and I think it's important that people have a voice in this, they are clearly concerned and also really interested. And including residents is the way that we, you know, bring more people in to collaborate and get involved. You are almost certainly going to get better questions asked of you in this process if you bring some residents in with sort of a broader view rather than, you know, I'm glad you have like very specific expertise of all the people added, but please add a couple of spots for residents. Thank you.
Thank you. And that is it for in-person public comment, and seeing no hands raised remotely, that would lead us to the mayor's comment. And I believe the mayor is online, and if I will do my duty, and Mayor, I'm going to promote you as a panelist. Okay, Mayor, do you want to unmute?
Good evening, everyone. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Great. I guess I'll first start off with just echoing some of the comments on Myron Moss. I was lucky enough to have him as a teacher my senior year, and he was a tremendous teacher, but he was a better person. Just a tremendous guy. Never would have guessed he was 82 years old. You know, I think a lot of people know him from running around town, some of the businesses he was in. He was a -- he was one of a group of teachers that came in in those early 70s, early 80s that had wonderful careers in Newburyport, but when their teaching days were over, they kept wanting to give back to the community. It's been so great these past three years reconnecting with Mr. Moss through Community Services of Newburyport, which is a collection of people dedicated to the city, and a lot of them are former educators here in Newburyport. And I think that just speaks to the quality of people that we have, you know, educating our kids over the vast majority of decades here in Newburyport. Just great people that always want to give back. So Mr. Moss, you know, recently, illness came up recently and suddenly passed away, so we certainly are going to remember him in Newburyport. What else do I want to share with you? I want to thank everyone. First, I hope everyone had a great July 4th holiday. You know, again, we haven't spoken since the end of June. We had a wonderful Road to the Revolution Parade happen here in Newburyport on June 28th. I want to thank the counselors who participated, Counselor Cameron, Harmon, Shan, Wright, Preston, on a rainy day. It was a great -- it couldn't have been a nicer event and a wonderful kind of tribute to Newburyport and the history of Newburyport. I want to thank the Custom House Maritime Museum. I want to thank Museum of Old Newbury, you know, particularly out of the Custom House, Captain Bob Pronin and James Russell. This was one of the most well-run events. Again, it's not easy putting on a parade, and they had never done it before, but I can't tell you the amount of people that came up, not only after the great speaking program we had in Market Square with Governor Healy and our Congressman, Seth Moulton, along with our state rep, Don Shan, and Senator Tar. The amount of people that reached out to the office since then and just commenting on how great they thought the parade was. And it was just a cool way to recognize, you know, Web 250 here in Newburyport, it's such an important milestone to celebrate, and we know the celebrations will continue into next year. But I just want to give them all a tremendous shout-out because it was just a really a great community event. What else is going on? There's a lot of things going on in personnel recently. You know, we have two new -- two new department heads starting. Finance Director Amy Sorrow has already started, you'll get to see her in action tonight. She has really hit the ground running. She is going to bring so much expertise in a lot of different areas to the finance office, and we're already seeing that, so we're certainly lucky to have her here. I also want to mention our Health Director, that's going to -- who's going to start next Monday, and that's Koletchi Obika. He's coming to us from Hawkeington. We're really excited for him to get started. I want to thank the Board of Health and the Human Resources Director for running a great process. As you know, the Board of Health appoints the Health Director. We had three really strong candidates, I thought. I really thought any one of them could have done the job and done it well, but Koletchi definitely rose to the top with his energy and enthusiasm, and again, he brings a great educational background to the Health Director position as well, so we're really excited to get him started. Another thing of recent news, you know, again, Wayne Amarillo is now working in Salem, New Hampshire. Our interim director, John Carey, is doing a great job in his place. We have decided to reach out to the UMass Carlin Center to assist with our next director's search. We used them the last time, two years ago. We wanted to give it a little bit of time to see what kind of resumes we received, and we really haven't got any that we thought were ready to move on to next stages and interviews and things like that. So we thought it was a good time to reach out to the UMass Carlin Center. This is an incredibly important position that we're trying to fill. We also got news on Friday that our Water Treatment Superintendent, Tom Cusack, is resigning. He will finish out the month. He took a similar job in Salisbury. So Jamie Tucolo did it to us again. He got a really great employee in Tom Cusack, so we're going to ask the Carlin Center to help with that process as well. Again, that just came out on Friday, so we'll start working with the Carlin Center this week on that. Tom has been great, particularly navigating us through a lot of these large water projects that we're -- that are in the planning stages, so again, that's going to be an incredibly important position to fill. Also, along the same lines of personnel, you know, you also mentioned on July 1st about keeping the Special Projects Manager, Kim Turner, in her role, even though it was voted six to five to remove her position from the budget. This was a decision I made and I made alone in consulting with my staff up here. We just have so many important things that that position is in the middle of right now. And again, you know, looking out for the best interest of Newburyport, we've decided to push forward with that, keep Kim in her position. We will come back with a supplemental budget later on, and again, we'll work with all city councils in the interim to again speak to the value of that position. And again, you know, right now, that position is in -- deeply involved in 20 different initiatives that's actively going on in Newburyport. The main one being the Rec Center of 59 Low Street, that, you know, 61% of voters who came out on May 13th approved. So again, we're pulling money currently out of the mayor's Personnel Services line item. We've done this for other jobs in the past when they're vacant. The only exception right now is there's not a vacancy right now, so it will be imperative for us to get support on this at a later date around the supplemental budget. What else can I talk about here? Just finally, this was a late add to this, but there's two late adds. You know, a lot of your meeting tonight is around transfers. There's some incredibly important projects that were improved in the CIP process that we're looking to move out, so transfers around the Mark Ron Lane Drainage Improvement Project, Newburyport High School Property Conditions Assessment, Plum Island Turnpike Chlorine Booster Station upgrades, wastewater treatment facility, critical resilient infrastructure, and also the Department of Public Services vehicles, two trucks, a generator and a mower. Those are all in front of you tonight, as well as we're requesting a transfer from paid parking for funding Phase Three of the Downtown Lighting Project. This is a port to get going because we've got work happening on State Street, Garden Street, and Otis Place after downtown outdoor dining season. And so if we can move forward with this Downtown Lighting Project, we're going to be able to do that electrical work, then we rip up the street and then we'll be able to do the final pave. Hopefully, all that work is finished by mid to late October. And then finally, this was a late lead, a late add to the mayor's update tonight, but we did get some good news from the Brown School gym demolition bids that we received. The low bid was $411,000. It was submitted by Belztec Inc. out of Ellington, Connecticut. And so just in the mayor's update, I did break down where the funds were coming from for this. To have a contingency for this project, we are going to go back to the Affordable Housing Trust and ask them to provide the $30,000 contingency for the project, and we feel very confident that they will be on board to support that. Andy Port is hoping, and I think he's already reached out to the Budget and Finance Chair, that this can be discussed at the next Budget and Finance meeting, which I believe is this week on Thursday, but don't quote me on that. But it'd be great to get this moving, have the demolition all in place for this far. Again, we had a very positive public meeting on June 25th at the library. Over 60 people attended, and again, I, you know, I can't say enough about data insight and the communication and the partnership that we have with them on this incredibly important, deeply affordable housing project. And again, this taking down the gym is the one big piece that will happen next. And that's all I've got for you tonight.
Thank you. Counselors, any comments or questions for the mayor? Counselor McCauley, then Counselor Preston?
Good evening, Mayor. Welcome back from vacation. I do have a question about, I was wondering if you could shed some light on the situation with the HR Director. The appointment had expired on June 30th. The contract had expired on July 1. In the contract, it has a 90-day reappointment clause, and if we missed that, which I -- it appears we have, then they have a one-month severance, and nowhere in there is it's a holdover. So I'm curious what the situation is with the HR Director.
Yeah, I have no new updates. I think I want to be thoughtful with all the appointments I bring to council. I believe when I first took office, I think I was three months in before I submitted Andy Port's submission. You know, we're working with Charis and our legal solicitor. We actually have a meeting about it tomorrow, about a number of personnel issues, and so, you know, again, I would imagine you'll have something for your August 4th packet.
Counselor McCauley, Counselor Preston?
Yeah, thank you. So I was going to ask the same, but I also have a different question as well. So we -- the updated CIP, when can we expect to see the CIP that was approved by the council? It's not yet on the city website.
That's a great question. We can work on that, hopefully get that up tomorrow for you. I'm sure that maybe just a little bit of Ethan leaving and Amy Sorrow coming on, but we can certainly work on that.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
All right. Mayor, thank you, and?
At my meeting, thank you.
Thank you. And that will bring us to the consent agenda.
The consent agenda this evening is the approval of the June 23rd minutes, two communications. The first is Communication 653, an update from the City Clerk's Office to go to General Government. Communication 654, an introduction of the new Health Director to go to Community Services and Committee of the Whole. Application 271, recurring block party on Quail Run Hollow for August 10th to be received and filed. Three applications to go to license and permits. Application 272, the Soak Shoreline Outdoor Sidewalk Tent on State Street. Application 273, the 13th Annual Classic Car Show on August 4th. An application 274, the Chamber of Commerce Fall Fest for October 4th and 5th. The transfers this evening are all currently to be referred to Budget and Finance. Transfer 238 is DPS from Capital Project Stabilization, $24,500, to NHS Property Condition Assessment and Upgrades, same amount. Transfer 239 DPS from Sewer Retained Earnings, $100,000, to wastewater treatment facility Critical Infrastructure Project, same amount. Transfer 240 DPS from Capital Project Stabilization, $230,239, to Mark Ron Lane, same amount. Transfer 241 DPS Capital Stabilization Projects, $39,100, to the Plum Island Turnpike Chlorine Booster Station Upgrade, same amount. And transfer 242 from the mayor, paid parking, $345,000, to Downtown Lighting, same amount. Appointment 578 is a new appointment, Rosemary D.C. of 8 Fenders Avenue to the Board of Health until November 1st, 2028, to Community Services. The following reappointments, 579, Matt Ellsworth, 38 Plummer Avenue, to Parks Commission until 9/1/30, Community Services. Appointment 580, Diff Bausch, 6 Iona Avenue, to the Historical Commission until 8/1/2028, to Planning and Development. Appointment 581, Roger Jones, 37 Storybrooke Drive, to Water Sewer Commission, 7/31/27, to Public Works and Safety. Appointment 582, Bruce Bergwall, 52 Boardman Street, to the Licensing Board until 9/1/2028, to Licenses and Permits. Appointment 583, Omni Remo, 11 Mark Ron Lane, to the Commission on Disabilities until 9/1/2028, to Community Services. And the following items are removed from their respective committees. From Community Services, there's three appointments, Appointment 561 and 569, and from Licenses and Permits, two applications, Application 269 and 270, and that is the consent agenda.
That is the wish of the council. Counselor Khan, Counselor Preston?
Yeah, can I just, I just want to request pulling out Application 271.
Removing it, okay.
I'd like to take out Appointment 583.
Appointment 583. Okay. Anything for Counselor McCauley?
Yeah, I'd just like to change Communication 654, the Health Director, to PWS and Council of the Whole. It was an update from 20B in our rules the last time that said it would go to PWS as a communication.
Sorry for oversight on my part. Counselor Lane?
I'm going to take out Transfer 240.
Just a point of order, 7/36, was that already removed? It was, it's, but it wasn't read, number 11. Gift Acceptance Owl Labs, 3998.
Oh, it's, I think you have an older version of it. We put it into the regular so that Counselor Harmon can.
This is, okay.
And accuse himself.
Motion to approve?
Second.
With the amendments?
Further discussion? Can we add accepting the, or receiving and filing the mayor's comment as well?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Voice vote? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Thank you. All right. That would lead us to the regular agenda.
So that would bring you to Appointment 583.
Motion to approve on first reading?
Second. And so this would be Omni Remo to the Commission on Disabilities, so first reading? Any discussion? Counselor Preston?
Yeah, just briefly, you know, as a reappointment to the Commission on Disabilities, you know, that per our council rules, that does not require that they come in for that, so to save the resident time, I think we can approve on the first reading. Thank you.
Counselor Donahue?
Thank you. Yeah, I just want to kind of just speak in favor of this appointment, this reappointment. Omni's been a wonderful addition to the Disabilities Commission over the last several years. I know that the co-chairs are quite pleased with her, so I would, yeah, support that motion to approve on the first reading. Thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion? All right. All those in favor of first reading Appointment 583, first reading, we could do a voice vote? Yeah? Second reading? We won't do a voice vote, we'll do a roll call. All right. So all those in favor, first reading, Omni Remo, Disabilities, Commission on Disabilities, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Under Communications, you have Application 271. The re-.
Application 271, yes. Counselor Khan?
Thank you, Counsel President. I know this is kind of new, and if I, we could hear from the Chair of License and Permits just reminding me on, maybe because it's a recurring block party, applications tend to, when we receive and file, the, it's either the event's canceled or not happening, so I just want to make sure in terms of how we're saying yes or no approving, and if this is moving forward, how do we, just wondering if we have this codified, and maybe I'm just forgetting, so if the Chair could just clarify that more.
Motion? Is that a motion to approve?
No, no, not.
Or receive and file?
No, I just commented on, sorry. So right now, it's listed as to receive and file, and I'm understanding, you know, it's a recurring block party, so I think we're bypassing that it has to come to committee, but I just want to make sure that wherever we have this kind of rule, because it's a little bit new, that we have it well-understood.
I think we still need to.
Motion to receive and file.
Thank you. Oh, sorry.
Discussion. Counselor Wright?
So.
So we update our ordinance to allow the clerk to have the authority to approve a recurring block party. So it's codified, it's in our ordinances. So anytime there's a recurring block party that hasn't had any issues, or any comments, or any concerns, the clerk has the authority from us to approve it.
Sorry, one last thing then. So when applications come and they're dismissed, this body, do we also receive and file? And I guess I'm just more, it's like, is there another term to show it's been approved? So maybe something to think about later, but I just think it's a little confusing to know when something is maybe no longer happening and it comes to this body. So just wanted to flag that. Thank you.
I understand, yeah. So I often look and see what you put for language in that, you might have to change it, depending on what that language is.
I believe we've delegated the authority to approve it to the clerk, and the clerk's responsibility is just to bring it to us, to notify us that it's been approved. So that's why it's a receive and file.
Councillor Zede?
Yeah, I think if you just, in the future, just put approved in the title of the, then it would be clear when it's receive and file because it's dead, or if it's receive and file because it's been ministerially approved by the clerk's office.
Councillor Khan?
Sorry, I do want to add, I think that's a great idea. I think having a front page that says approval, and then your approval like checks. That way, when it's in here, it's a little separate from a regular application. So I would just think, maybe we could think through on what's that cover page that goes along with it. Thank you.
Thank you. So the motion on the floor is to receive and file. Any further discussion? Block party, we're receiving and filing, I think we can do a voice vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, thank you.
Next up is Communication 654.
Six?
Is the introduction of the new Health Director.
Councillor McCauley?
Oh, oh, you didn't call that, I'm sorry, that's, sorry.
I thought I had changed that in the consenting, okay.
So that, yeah, so just to refresh my own memory, so that Public Works and Safety Committee of the Whole.
Committee of the Whole.
So Communication 651 is next, and that's the memo to Council President regarding the discipline of city council members.
Motion to receive and file?
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Communication 652, the email from City Council President Cameron, naming members to the Ordinance Review Committee.
Motion to refer to General Government? Second.
Discussion? Councillor Zede?
I just, that's all right, I get, it's fine.
And I'll just say as a point of information, maybe it's General Government Committee of the Whole. I think it might be just good to get our heads together with the administration and those are just, the committee's going to do the work, but just to make clear how it's structured and who's doing what. That makes sense, okay, thank you. Any further discussion? So motion to refer to General Government Committee of the Whole. This is the communication from the President regarding the members of the Ordinance Review Committee. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thankfully, none of you named to the committee opposed it, so that's good. I do appreciate you all stepping up for that. That would lead us to...
Communication 655 is the open meeting law complaint submitted by Richard Lodge.
Motion to receive and file? Second.
Just as a point of discussion, I think the motion ought to be receive and file, and also instruct the city clerk to contact the city solicitor to give us a response on a timely basis.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Any further discussion? This, I think we'll just do a roll call.
Councillor Wright?
Yes.
Councillor Zede?
Yes.
Councillor Donahue?
Yes.
Councillor Grantis?
Yes.
Councillor Harmon?
Yes.
Councillor Khan?
Yes.
Councillor Lane?
Yes.
Councillor McCauley?
Yes.
Councillor Preston?
Yes.
Councillor Shan?
Yes.
Councillor Cameron?
Yes.
Okay. The late file Communication 656, the mayor's memo on the ad hoc committee on the water infrastructure projects.
Motion to receive and file?
Second.
Discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, motion to receive and file, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, that passes.
Transfer 230, the multiple HHH per diem inspectors, $24,000, to the general heat, electric, city hall, general postage, general telecommunications, same amount.
So I'll make an omnibus motion to waive the rules regarding referral to committee, and to establish an emergency preamble, with the reasoning being that under MGL Mass General Law, Chapter 44, 33, we only have the first 15 days of the new fiscal year, which is tomorrow, to consider this request, and finally, to approve the transfer. Second.
Motion made in seconded, Councillor Zede?
So I honestly don't have a ton of information that I could share with you on the actual topics, but you have a litany of staff behind you who could probably speak to each one of these. I did communicate with the Finance Department about a number of transfers tonight that there were requests for emergencies on. In fact, the next many, you'll be hearing me make similar motions to at least put them on the floor for consideration. So at least the theme of some of them is, you know, higher electricity costs that were anticipated, one-time cost, payrolls that came in unexpectedly a little bit higher. But of course, councillors are open to probe around them. We would not obviously be taking this to committee. So this one in particular is the taking money from the per diem inspectors, $24,000, and transferring them to three different categories, and that's the heat and electric, city hall, postage, and telecom for the same amount total, 24K. Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion? And again, we have city folks here, if we need further explanation. All right, so just refresh my memory, so this is just on this transfer 230?
Yes.
Emergency preamble, waive the rules, approve in one meeting. Further discussion, roll call?
Councillor Wright?
Yes.
Councillor Zede?
Yes.
Councillor Donahue?
Yes.
Councillor Grantis?
Yes.
Councillor Harmon?
Yes.
Councillor Khan?
Yes.
Councillor Lane?
Yes.
Councillor McCauley?
Yes.
Councillor Preston?
Yes.
Councillor Shan?
Yes.
Councillor Cameron?
Yes.
Next is Transfer 231, fire multiple $31,000 to multiple $31,000.
Motion to waive the rules, establish an emergency under the same Mass General Law provision, and to approve Transfer 231.
Second.
Motion made in seconded, Councillor Zede?
So I do have a question on this one myself. Again, I apologize, I don't really have much information to share, but for the Finance Director or Chief of Staff, I'm confused as the transfer 2, which is 51142, which is firefighters, the transfer is 31, that at least makes sense, but the line item is in the hole, almost $450,000. Can somebody explain, and the category is in the negative, so I understand that money was shifted among the category, but this line itself was $430,000 in the hole? Can we get a little explanation as to why that is or was the case from anybody?
All right, so who would like to take a crack at that? If you could step up to the microphone and also just state your name and title, for the record, that would be great.
Hi, it's my first time. Hi, Amy Saro, the new Finance Director. So that line has been rectified, the overall org is in need of the transfer, but the firefighter line, there was some issues internally where firefighters were charged to the wrong line that was cleaned up by my staff in this past week. So the firefighter line is still negative, but it's $33,000 negative.
Okay. Be great if you could get that to us in writing, whatever happens here. Councillor Zede, any further comment?
So were the errors just in the category, so some of the money moved around to different lines within the category, and it brought this line into negative 33 approximately?
Yeah, we had some staff salaries that were going unnecessarily towards the firefighter line, whereas they should have been going to the other ranks. So that was something that we started going through in trying to figure out why these transfers were needed, reclassing those employees to where they should be.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Other question?
Councillor McCauley?
Yeah, thank you. It goes from, the way I'm hearing it is, the line item is minus 433 to 31,000, minus 31,000. Is, will this transfer cover that completely, or will it continue to be negative?
That will, that will fix the entire Personnel Services.
Okay, got it, thank you.
Yes.
Councillor Lane?
31 or 33? Because in the packet, we have 31.
The line itself is 33, but there's some savings in the dispatch overtime line, so the overall Personnel Services.
So 31 is...
Is sufficient to clean up, yes.
Any further discussion? All right, thank you. Amy, you can sit for now. And with no further discussion, roll call?
Councillor Wright?
Yes.
Councillor Zede?
Yes.
Councillor Donahue?
Yes.
Councillor Grantis?
Yes.
Councillor Harmon?
Yes.
Councillor Khan?
Yes.
Councillor Lane?
Yes.
Councillor McCauley?
Yes.
Councillor Preston?
Yes.
Councillor Shan?
Yes.
Councillor Cameron?
Yes.
Next is Transfer 232, Treasurer Tax Title Expense, $138,000 to Treasurer Collector, same amount.
I would make a motion to, same, waive the rules, establish the emergency, and approve 232, but also collectively do the same with 233, which is a $3,000 transfer within the same department, IT Software Licensing, $3,000, to IT Office Supplies, $3,000.
Second.
Okay, motion made collectively on transfers, 232 and 233, emergency preamble, waive the rules, approve in one meeting. Councillor Zede, discussion? We're good, okay. Further discussion? Hearing none, roll call?
Councillor Wright?
Yes.
Councillor Zede?
Yes.
Councillor Donahue?
Yes.
Councillor Grantis?
Yes.
Councillor Harmon?
Yes.
Councillor Khan?
Yes.
Councillor Lane?
Yes.
Councillor McCauley?
Yes.
Councillor Preston?
Yes.
Councillor Shan?
Yes.
Councillor Cameron?
Yes.
Okay. Brings us to 234, Transfer 234 Parking, Parking Credit Card Fees, $12,850 to Parking Enforcement Officers, same amount.
Motion to waive the rules, establish an emergency under 4433B, and to pass Transfer 234.
Second.
Councillor Zede?
This one, I just have a question on, so this is a recurring question, because there's another one, but I have racked my brain, maybe my colleagues have a better memory. I can't remember payrolls coming in wrong at the end of the year. Could we get a little bit of an explanation as to, were they errors that weren't put in for, were they mathematical errors, both on this one, and then there'll be another one, where maybe it's the same answer, maybe not?
Anybody want to try that?
Hello, Amy Saro. So this is something I'm trying to unravel myself. I'm trying to find the budget work docs to, that came up with FY '25, to see if persons were missed. I know in speaking with DPS, they had projections, and the numbers that Finance had was missing two employees, and that's why the water transfer is so high. To avoid this error, in FY '26, I'm doing a full salary projection for the entirety of FY '26, so the entire administration and council will know before the end of August that all of our lines are sufficient, or if they're not, why, and we can know that early and often. So I don't have a full explanation for FY '25 on my ninth day, but I can assure you, this will not be an ongoing issue that everyone is not aware of.
Councillor Khan?
Yeah, thank you. You said in August, you could actually kind of do a projection for the year. How will you, what do you envision in terms of that kind of communication that you would give to the council? Because we've not had that before, so I think that would be a great idea.
So this is something I had to do quarterly in my previous town. So I do a full projection for salary lines. It comes down to every individual person for their full payroll for the entire year, for every aspect of their pay throughout the entire payroll. It is obviously tedious, so I often don't do it more than quarterly. And I send that projection, I typically don't send out the work papers, but I do send out a memo, and typically a PowerPoint, because I used to have to present it quarterly, but I at least send out a memo saying, hey, these lines are trending, like they're going to be over. I do a rolling basis for like overtime and things like that. So if, you know, it typically says, if the police department continues at this rate for overtime, as they have for the past rolling six weeks, this is where we're projected to be at the end of the year, I'll continue to work with the department head to avoid that. And sometimes we can mitigate those impacts, but at least gives us an idea at the beginning of the year what the potential worst-case scenario is. And that way, we can monitor and watch that projection to real life as we go throughout the year, to make adjustments as we need to. So we previously had to freeze our budgets in town, so the department stopped spending unnecessarily to ensure that there's enough money within that department to cover their own expenses.
One last, if you don't mind. You know, we have the mid-year report, but that's like the total of the line items, and you're talking about within the line items, the breakdown. So that's a little difference here.
Yeah, I go very earlier in the learning.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions, comments? Okay. Hearing none, we can have a roll call on Transfer 234, Parking Credit Card Fees, $12,850 to Parking Enforcement Officers.
Councillor Wright?
Yes.
Councillor Zede?
Yes.
Councillor Donahue?
Yes.
Councillor Grantis?
Yes.
Councillor Harmon?
Yes.
Councillor Khan?
Yes.
Councillor Lane?
Yes.
Councillor McCauley?
Yes.
Councillor Preston?
Yes.
Councillor Shan?
Yes.
Councillor Cameron?
Yes.
Next is Transfer 235, DPS Water Maintenance Distribution, $40,000 to Water Labor, same amount.
Motion to waive the rules, establish emergency, and approve Transfer 235.
Second.
A motion made in seconded, Councillor Zede?
Another question on this one, so what I'm confused about is the transfer is 40,000, the line is in the hole 100, and the category is in the hole 26. So it seems to me that it's an insufficient transfer to, A, to balance the line back out. Shouldn't the transfer be 100,000 at least? Because, and plus the 26 you need in order to come back up to zero?
Amy, come on up.
So statutorily, the city auditor can move between lines within the legal org, so I just put the single line that needed the money, and I can shuffle the surpluses and other lines to make that work. If the council would prefer going forward, I can give a full breakdown of every line. I just, for the sake of making it fit on one page, selected the single line that was over.
Right. No, I understand, and that's probably subject of some discussion in the future about the category-based spending, but the category is also in the negative, according to this.
So statutorily, the city auditor can move between lines within the legal org, so I just put the single line that needed the money and I can shuffle the surpluses and other lines to make that work. If the council would prefer going forward, I can give a full breakdown of every line. I just, for the sake of making it fit on one page, selected the single line that was over.
Right. No, I understand, and that's probably subject of some discussion in the future about the category-based spending, but the category is also in the negative, according to this.
Yes, the transfer is sufficient to cover the Personnel Services. The other lines within Personnel Services have surplus to cover, so the 40,000 is sufficient for the entirety of it.
Okay. Okay. The way I understand it is when you say budget category is negative 26, it means all the lines add up to negative 26, right? So there'll be...
Just the personnel.
Right. So all the personnel together is negative 26, so there's...
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. Okay, I'll stop for now. I don't, I need to articulate it better, but our counselors can ask if they wish.
Any other, Counselor Khan?
Yeah, thank you. Is there a better way to put this together? Because I, I kind of agree with, you know, who's also the Chair of our Budget and Finance, that it is a little harder to follow this, but do you know another way? I mean, is our form kind of making it hard to see what you're saying?
Yes. What I submit, what I submitted to Swanscott before I left for a year in transfers is a lot different from this, so I made it fit in the form for the sake of this, but I am happy to work with Budget and Finance to come up with a better solution for transfers that makes sense.
Okay. Just on a different theme then, I'll take, if you're confident the 40K is sufficient, that's fine, but you said there were two employees missing, meaning they were charged off to something else?
No, they were not included in one of the Finance budget projections.
They weren't included in the budget in the first place. So were they paid all throughout the year and then just hit the wall at the end here?
Yeah, so DPS was able to provide us their own projections that included those staff, but then when we looked internally in Finance, they were not included in it.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Of course.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion on Transfer 235? Hearing none, roll call.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Zee?
Yes.
Counselor Dennehy?
Yes.
Counselor Grantis?
Yes.
Counselor Harmon?
Yes.
Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
That brings us to Transfer 236, Harbor Master Equipment, $4,955 to Harbor Master Cashman Parking Attendant, $3,700, and Harbor Master IT Expenses, $1,255.
Motion to waive the rules, establish an emergency and pass Transfer 236.
Second.
Okay, motion made in seconded, Counselor Zee?
I don't have any questions, I just want to express some frustration. I mean, I don't understand these, frankly, I don't understand payrolls, just because this is not normal and other counselors can use their memories and question me if I'm wrong, but I don't remember ever seeing these. And I think the broader point I want to make is just that the conversation about the category versus line spending is going to come to a head in the next couple of months, it has to, because it's just not making any sense. And clearly, there's accounting and then there's finance, and, you know, I understand accounting and shifting money between lines and so forth, but the council spends an inordinate amount of time processing a budget on a line level, so it's just, it's a little crazy to think of, if you imagine the budget with all the lines removed and just showing categories, it'd be like a page and a half, that might be great in some ways, but it would probably be a little, leaving us a little hungry for some of the details that we pour over, so we need to have that conversation and get on the same page.
Counselor Khan?
Yeah, and just to add to that, I think very well stated by the Chair, I also, since we are approving these transfers, sending them, and we're not having anything sent to committee, I would really like to spend time at Budget and Finance Committee in some way or form, because I agree completely, we've never had to do this before, so it'd be really nice in committee to talk about what happened, and maybe from that, we can understand why this happened and happened to come this way. So I look forward to talking with the new Finance Director and having this conversation in, in committee as an agenda item. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion on Transfer 236? Hearing none, roll call.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Zee?
Yes.
Counselor Dennehy?
Yes.
Counselor Grantis?
Yes.
Counselor Harmon?
Yes.
Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
I took this out basically to expedite the process. They're ready to go, the money's been sitting there waiting, and I just don't want the neighborhood to have to wait any longer, they've been waiting long enough, and before we start getting into some rainy weather and their basements start flooding again, I just want to get the ball rolling on this project.
Discussion, Counselor Zee, and then Counselor Khan?
I, I really, I struggle with this, I really appreciate the sentiments of the Ward Six Counselor, but unfortunately, my confidence isn't super high. I need to know the degree, confidence and interval degree on how, is this going to come in at the price that we're talking about? What's the level of engineering and design that's been completed? Are we going to solve, you know, I know we've heard the very high level that we're trying to inhibit a big project from occurring like Phillips Drive, so we want to spend some money, I'm all on board with that. This dollar amount, 230, doesn't seem crazy, it wasn't the capital improvement plan, a lot of checkmarks, so those things are all good. However, you know, what's, what, first of all, what are we doing for $230,000? How long will it take? Are we, again, confident in the price? Is this the full price, or is other money's coming from other places? And then, at the end of the project, what's next? Is there another phase, or is this like Mark Juan Lane's done and we'll never hear about it again because it'll be perfect, or is it a million-dollar project that comes next? So those would be some of my questions. You know, again, I'm sympathetic and residents I know have waited, but just being, having seen some of these movies before, I just, I want to know what the ending, at least vaguely, looks like.
Okay. Counselor Khan, Counselor McCauley, Counselor Lane, and we do have Interim Director Carrie here.
Yes, I'm not going to repeat which, what I agree with the Counselor from Ward One. The other thing I, I think will be important is also the public conversation around this, and since this is an amount of money, I think it's worth other people in the city and the community hearing about this effort. And, and I, I do think that everything that was mentioned, a project like this is really important to, to understand, but it's the communication, and I hope, and maybe we can ask, holding it up, because I do recognize, you know, in terms of our meeting time, you know, what, what would be the ramifications if we, we did wait one cycle, a committee meeting and then an approval at our next council meeting, and I'd like to know maybe what, what would be, what would be detrimental to what is happening with this project, so I would like to hear from.
Okay, do we want to hear from the interim director or Counselor McCauley? Do you want to go and then Counselor Lane, and we can then have the...
I'll go, because I'm...
And they can contemplate their answer while I, while I talk. Stall. Stall. So I just want to make a couple of comments about this to provide some insight. This is a project that we've been babysitting for quite some time. The previous DPS Director had taken this as a priority going forward, so the engineering was done in-house, it was done by our own city staff, we were going to outsource it, but we did it in-house going, and that allowed us to save some money, roughly $125,000 or so that we could put towards this. This actually is a quote from one of our approved contractors. It was done, I believe, back in the April timeframe or so. It's still, the numbers should still be good, given what's going on there. And so the design and the engineering have been worked through and studied. There is an actual quote for this work to begin, and everyone, as the Ward Six Counselor, everyone is just waiting for this to be funded going on. The answer really is if we wait a cycle, we're just delaying it another three weeks or so before we can begin going forward. But anyway, I hope that gave some insight into what's going on, they're going to connect the pipes, which were not connected for a number of reasons in the, in the past, and therefore it should close the loop and keep the drainage flowing going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Lane?
Yeah, so that's, I was going to say, the cake's already baked here, we're just delaying, delaying the process. I will say that for anybody interested in the audience or at home, Longfellow Drive is going to be Phillips Drive 2.0 at some point. Just so you know, that's been on my radar for quite some time, so expect that they're going to need some pretty significant work at some point. If you look at the age of the developments, Phillips Drive was done 10, 15 years before Longfellow started, so you've got roughly the same kind of infrastructure going on there, so like I said, anybody keeping track, keep that on your radar, because that will be coming down at some point and will be costly, and I'll defer to...
Verify that.
Interim Director Carrie. Counselor Zee, while, while giving some more time to stall.
DPS interim director. Counselor McCauley gave an excellent summation of what has transpired thus far on Mark Juan. The only thing I can add in terms of any deference going forward, operationally, it will impact us in terms of any pumping that we have to do with city staff, we have been doing that for roughly the past year in terms of maintaining levels, so that ties up crews during the course of the day and any rain events, but I think all the other questions were answered by Counselor McCauley in terms of funding and design, as well as our on-call contractor.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions while...
Just a couple, so it says the total cost of the projects, 350K and $239, and the transfers, 230, 239, and then there's 110 in there, I think, so there's 340 or so, so you'll be short 10. Where do you get the 10 from? 10,000?
I'll have to look at those numbers, I'm sorry, I don't have most of them.
Second question is, does the, the 350, assuming that's total, does that include a contingency of any kind? I understand there's a quote, but is there a 10%? Is there any buffer, gap for unexpected?
I can get back to you on the...
I have that information, yeah. So in the, in the, I'm sorry, in the CIP, there's a $54,000 contingency.
Okay.
The construction costs are 284, and so the total cost of, the total breakdown is the initial design, the pipe installation has a 20%, I guess for inflationary costs to bring a total to 273,600. There's money assigned to the mill and overlay, again with an inflationary amount of, so the total is 64,400, and they've also priced in $3,000 for police details, so that's the total cost of the project.
That's the 350 number?
That's the 350, 239.
Counselor Harmon?
Just to answer the question on the missing 10, that reading over my colleague's shoulder was, in the design phase, was the 10,000, that's not adding up.
Oh, thank you.
Any more council deliberation discussion? Okay. So hearing none, so the motion on the floor is, which was made in, in seconded, emergency preamble, Counselor Zee?
So I'm just, for my own purposes, I'm going to state my understanding of this project. So I understand the purpose, it's Mark Juan Lane, it's drainage, we've heard all about that, I'm hearing that the project's 350,239, give or take, 10,000, and that that includes starting the project all the way to finishing and including milling and overlaying the street, so at the end of the project, it will be put back together, I'm sure there may be future phases, but that this phase will be closed out, and there are built-in contingencies into this, so that if there is an unforeseen circumstance, especially laying pipe, that it will be covered. And last thing, I didn't ask, but permitting has somehow been completed along the way as well, I don't know if that's conservation or whomever, the jurisdictional bodies would be over this. So that's just my understanding of the project, and I wanted to put that on the record. Thank you.
I think we should probably have an answer to that, if Director Carrie wants to...
As far as permeating some reconnection of existing infrastructure, is that...
If you wouldn't mind just going up there, yeah, just thank you.
I'll follow up on the conservation question, but as far as, it's not a change to any existing infrastructure or reconnecting infrastructure that was at one time disconnected.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Counselor Lane?
Just one last comment, so basically it's a Band-Aid on the border, is what this is, because you're going to have more things coming down, down the line that need to be done there, so just so you know that this is just like the Band-Aid to make sure that nobody's getting flooded out in their basements anymore.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call on Transfer 240?
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Zee?
Yes.
Counselor Dennehy?
Yes.
Counselor Grantis?
Yes.
Counselor Harmon?
Yes.
Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
And the last transfer is 237, it's DPS Capital Project Stabilization, $339,021.40 to DPS New Ford Super Duty Utility Truck, $218,992.40, RC Mower, $64,250, and a Generator with Trailer for $55,779.
Motion to waive the rules, establish an emergency, this emergency is a little different, at least argument for it, it's that DPS is trying to purchase these on a state bid contract that's going to roll over here with the new fiscal year, and they're trying to capture the pricing from FY25, so the request is if, if the council will contemplate passing it tonight, rather than waiting, then they would be able to move forward with these purchases at the stated prices, rather than when the prices change, they've gotten confirmation from the dealer, so that's the, that's the reason, or the proposed reason for the emergency, and then finally to approve.
Second.
Okay, thank you for the explanation, motion made in seconded, Counselor McCauley?
Thank you, Counsel President. Just a question, I understand the, the trucks are on the state contract, what about the trailer, generator, and the mower itself? Are they all on the contract? Do we know, or is that just lumped together?
Ron Keefe, General Fullman for the Highway Department, I do most of the bidding on all the equipment for the city. The mower is actually on the federal bid list, so not in the state, on the Fed, which we can still use. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ron.
Is the generator and the trailer on the...
On that bid list, or the...
Those two pieces of equipment, I believe, are from Sewer Department, but normally they bid off the same list. They have to give a little code, which Tom looks up to make sure that it's being purchased off the state bid. Without that code, Tom will send it back and say go to the state bid, but knowing the rest of the department heads, I'm pretty sure that that was all done. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Ron. Further discussion, Counselor Zee?
Yeah, I just want to, want to just speak at a more broad level here, so I just want to, you know, take a step back for a moment and just remember that we're doing things differently this year, we pushed money into this cap stabilization fund like two weeks ago as part of our broader budget order. You can see the category has about $1.2 million, which is basically what our capital stabilization fund is funded with, and now we're doing the capital raft that we're so used to doing in the spring, but we're doing it now, and I, I do think there's a little bit of working the kinks out here with the timing. My colleagues on budget will remember, we've been talking about this basically all year, and I think, you know, still, still there's room for improvement, because one of the questions we kept asking was, will the timing work for the projects and the purchases? So I'm, I'm sure there are ways to make it a little bit smoother, but what I want to offer to my colleagues for consideration is, we put $1.2 million in here and we're spending 340 right now, and we just spent 230 for Mark Juan Lane also, so I'm just, just trying to back up for a minute and just recognize that, like you've got 1.2 and you're basically spending 550, 500 of it. I wouldn't say in the blink of an eye, this is not conveying the right message, and I'm trying, I'm just saying that, you know, this is how fast the money comes and goes, they're both all good projects, and then we have several items that got referred to committee that are also coming from the cap stabilization, and these do tie back to the CIP, but whether you sort of are seeing it or not, you're in the middle of this, of that prioritization conversation, now you're just spending the money. So my question really is, you know, the RC mower and the Ford Super Duty, can we just get an idea of what vehicles these are replacing in age? And I think both are replacement, the generator and trailer I'm less interested in, but Super Duty's how old, maybe for Ron and the, and the mower, or is that a new piece of equipment?
I mean, I wasn't expecting that question. Ron, again. The F-350s were replacing Truck Six, which currently, I believe, has 99,000 miles and is approaching the end of its life, rotten in the rare quarters. Usually when I, in the other one, is replacing 97 on the Water Department, which is on its last legs as well. Both trucks are approaching 100,000. The last truck we just traded in for the Water Department, they took in for trade for 250, it left our yard and went right to the scrapyard, that is no joke. In recent years, you guys, well, foremost to you, the city waited till the last second, purchased five Max on a 15-year bond that was paid up two years ago, those trucks should have been replaced in two, two years ago. The bed already snapped off one. So before we come to you and ask for equipment, we've done our due diligence on making sure those trucks stay alive. In this current one, we'll be trading those trucks as well as Truck 11, because the rubbish truck finally did come in. Truck 11, I'd be lucky to get $500 for it, we put $4,000 into it to keep it on the road till the rubbish truck came in. So talk about a Band-Aid. Most of our equipment, before we come to you, has been passed down to the Highway Department from other departments. We have a couple of trucks that have been handed down from Water, bed rotted off one, We have a couple trucks that have been handed down from Water, bed rotted off one, a dump body on our Big Mac snapped off. If you guys see a flat bed floating around town, it's because in the process of dumping, it snapped. These are frontline trucks. We're the only town around in Essex County that still has our model Max. Most towns have gotten rid of them. But the trucks that they're replacing are trucks that are rotted out and no longer pass inspection.
And the mower? The mower is something new.
Just like the trash truck, we look at our workers' comp claims, and that was one of the biggest things, was twisting ankles on the hills or at the mall. That's going to be shared by highway as well as parks. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Harmon, and I think Counsel Wright also had your hand up.
Thank you. Just to help, as we're moving these quickly on the same night, and kudos to the structure of the CIP having these on open gov, easy to access the files around them. So just for the, I believe, the DPS, no, the sewer truck is, or the DPS truck is 14 years old with 100,000 miles. The sewer truck is seven, over 17 years old with 140,000 miles. The generator is 46 years old. The trailer is from 2002. And the mower is obviously a new piece of equipment, so there's not a, an age on the existing one, but just for information.
The mower did go up, by the way, on the fed contract. It was priced out of our price range, but we were able to find another one on the fed contract that stuck into our price range that was still on the fed bid list. Same mower, just under a different company.
Okay, further discussion?
Counsel, thank you.
Counselora Khan?
Yeah, so I think, you know, thank you very much. I don't have any more questions for you, so if you want to sit down, or you can sit down. I think one of the things, you know, we've been, the CIP process, we got to hear about a lot of these projects, we got to ask questions, but now we're actually, and we always said this, you know, while nothing, as we approved and talked about it, is it still has to come by this body before we approve it. So just because it's here, and we have, and it's great, we have open gov with all the documents, but one thing that might, I think what we're running into a little bit is the timing of these, like, this situation is a very time-sensitive one. Our meetings are a little bit more farther spaced out. I feel like maybe what might be good is, not that I want to add more to budget and finance agenda, but if there is any anticipation, we don't really need to have the transfer yet, but we could talk about, I would say, one of the, like, the status of some of these ones for this year could be brought up, and maybe as part of a report from the Finance Director, or from, like, these, these capital projects coming forth, we could still kind of talk about it, refresh it, see if there's been any changes to what's in open gov in terms of the cost. So it's something I'm just suggesting, I think there's ways we can maybe get ahead of this, if there's enough planning and communication with the administration. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Zied?
I just wanted to add a little institutional knowledge, so the, the slope mower was considered in the past. I certainly think the price has gone up, at least from memory, it was like 30,000, maybe five years ago. So inflation has been tremendous for slope mowers, but, you know, the council turned it down at the time. It was a parks request at the time. That's probably the only part of this transfer that gives me a little bit of heartburn. I understand the need for the trucks. I'm sure the mower could be used at $65,000 for a mower. I don't know, and I'm hoping others may have some thoughts they may share to help me think about it one way or the other.
Counsel Donahue?
Yes, thank you. So I do know a little bit about the RC mowers, and I know it's been on the sort of list for a while, they've been asking for this for a while. It's a pretty vital piece of equipment for a lot of the areas we have in town, and I do appreciate that it will be shared between parks and DPS, because the Bartlett Mall has really gone to the wayside in terms of mowing, and a big part of that is because it's just, it's dangerous and really difficult to mow hills, right? So I do know these, these RC mowers really go a long way to keep our staff safe and to maintain our many green spaces, so I'll be supporting it. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Lane?
I just want to point out, these are some of the soft costs that some of us get heartburn over some of these projects that we do for millions of dollars. These are the little things that add up, that cost money, that we can't afford, or we have to argue about, or we have to figure out how to make it happen. So when, when you scrutinize some of us here talking about these projects, this is what we talk about. These are soft costs. These are what make things not a cup of coffee a month, just to put that out there.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, roll call on the motion to approve emergency preamble and waive the rules.
Counsel Wright?
Yes.
Counsel Zied?
Yes.
Counsel Donahue?
Yes.
Counsel Grantis?
Yes.
Counsel Harmon?
Yes.
Counsel Khan?
Yes.
Counsel Lane?
Yes.
Counsel McCauley?
Yes.
Counsel Preston?
Yes.
Counsel Shan?
Yes.
Counsel Cameron?
Yes.
Second reading appointments, it's appointment five seventy-two, Alden Clark, 15 Month Street, reappointment for the Planning Board until 7:15, 2028.
Motion to approve on second reading.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Roll call.
Counsel Wright?
Yes.
Counsel Zied?
Yes.
Counsel Donahue?
Yes.
Counsel Grantis?
Yes.
Counsel Harmon?
Yes.
Counsel Khan?
Yes.
Counsel Lane?
Yes.
Counsel McCauley?
Yes.
Counsel Preston?
Yes.
Counsel Shan?
Yes.
Counsel Cameron?
Yes.
And that leaves you, Order 735, motion of censure for breach of decorum for the June third meeting.
Motion to receive and file?
Second.
Discussion. Counsel Donahue?
Thank you, President. So I just want to apologize again, this time a little more directly for my comments. I'd like to apologize to my fellow counselors, Wright and Zied, directly, and also apologize to the community at large for causing disruption and distraction from our regular business. I was caught up in the, in the tone of the debate, and I really have no excuse and do not condone at all my reaction. It was inappropriate, and I just cannot apologize enough, so I'll yield there. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? Counsel Zied?
Well, I just wanted to say thank you, and apology accepted, and I'm ready to move on. Thank you so much, appreciate it.
Counsel Wright?
Likewise, to Counsel, thank you. I appreciate the apology, and thank you.
Your luck.
Okay, seeing no further discussion, we'll do a roll call.
Counsel Wright?
Yes.
Counsel Zied?
Yes.
Counsel Donahue?
Yes.
Counsel Grantis?
Yes.
Counsel Harmon?
Yes.
Counsel Khan?
Yes.
Counsel Lane?
Yes.
Counsel McCauley?
Yes.
Counsel Preston?
Yes.
Counsel Shan?
Yes.
Counsel Cameron?
Yes.
And that leaves you, Order 735, motion of censure for breach of decorum for the June third meeting.
Motion to receive and file?
Second.
Discussion. Counsel Donahue?
Thank you, President. So I just want to apologize again, this time a little more directly for my comments. I'd like to apologize to my fellow counselors, Wright and Zied, directly, and also apologize to the community at large for causing disruption and distraction from our regular business. I was caught up in the, in the tone of the debate, and I really have no excuse and do not condone at all my reaction. It was inappropriate, and I just cannot apologize enough, so I'll yield there. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? Counsel Zied?
Well, I just wanted to say thank you, and apology accepted, and I'm ready to move on. Thank you so much, appreciate it.
Counsel Wright?
Likewise, to Counsel, thank you. I appreciate the apology, and thank you.
Your luck.
Okay, seeing no further discussion, we'll do a roll call.
Counsel Wright?
Yes.
Counsel Zied?
Yes.
Counsel Donahue?
Yes.
Counsel Grantis?
Yes.
Counsel Harmon?
Yes.
Counsel Khan?
Yes.
Counsel Lane?
Yes.
Counsel McCauley?
Yes.
Counsel Preston?
Yes.
Counsel Shan?
Yes.
Counsel Cameron?
Yes.
And that brings you to Order 736, the gift acceptance for Owl Labs, 3,998 dollars.
I'll be recusing myself.
Record, who are you, Counsel Harmon is accusing himself?
Motion to continue to a date certain, which is, what is it? Fourth? August 4th. Yep.
Counsel McCauley?
Yeah, in this particular one, I hate to say it, but I think we should bring it into committee as opposed to just to date certain. This is something that potentially could be on our procurement list as part of some of the other things that we might need overall. I know it's a very generous gift going forward, but I, just for the sake of the matter, it's just my opinion that I think that we might want to have a little bit of public visibility to something like that.
Point of information, what committee would you recommend? It's for the Clerk's Department?
It is a donation going forward, and so just the nature of the gift, if there's any software that goes along, you know, there's, there's one thing about the gift, but then there might be software or maintenance or something, other things that we don't necessarily know about going forward. I'm sure, when I read the letter, it seemed all encompassing, but on the other hand, again, this is a communication device that we leverage for our public meetings, and I'm just thinking that it might be good if some of our residents had some comments that they might want to bring to that meeting. That's all.
Okay.
I'll just ask, I don't mind.
Okay, so the motion's been withdrawn.
Motion to refer to Budget and Finance?
Second.
Okay, and just straight Budget and Finance? I'm not recommending COTW, but just, so Budget and Finance? All right. Thank you. Any further discussion? All right, we can just do a voice vote on this. So motion has been made and seconded to refer to Budget and Finance. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, Counsel Harmon recusing. Counsel Harmon?
Next up is Order 737, 59 Low Street, Operational Control.
Motion to refer to General Government?
Second.
This is just belt and suspenders as to what we're trying to do here, and operational control of a city property goes through General Government.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Do we want Committee of the Whole, or?
It's up to you, if you...
I don't think we need to, but, okay.
Motion made to refer to General Government, 737, any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, referral to GG, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Order 738 is the Ad-Hoc Committee on Water Infrastructure Prioritization.
Motion to refer to Public Works and Safety? Second.
And Committee of the Whole.
And Committee of the Whole.
Okay, motion made and seconded, Public Works and Safety, Committee of the Whole. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Order 739, Surveillance Cameras on Plum Island and Kiosk.
Motion to refer to Public Works and Safety?
Second.
Any discussion? Counsel McCauley?
Just as introduction, Harbor Commission, Harbor Master are concerned about potential activity that's going on in there, and so they've proposed putting in some cameras down on the island to at least begin to quantify what's going on down there, so.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none, so the motion, Public Works and Safety, and is that straight, or is that...
That's straight.
Straight, okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Order 740 is the late file, the gift acceptance of the Friends of Newbury Park Trees, 15,000.
So your motion?
Continue to August 4th. Second.
Okay, motion made to continue to August 4th, made and seconded. Any discussion?
I'll get the locations of the trees, I promise.
All right, so continue to August 4th. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you.
One ordinance, it's ordinance Tuesday, three, second reading of amendment, amending Chapter 12, 13 dash 176, restricted parking on Carter Street.
Motion to approve on second reading?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, hearing none, roll call.
Counsel Wright?
Yes.
Counsel Zied?
Yes.
Counsel Donahue?
Yes.
Counsel Grantis?
Yes.
Counsel Harmon?
Yes.
Counsel Khan?
Yes.
Counsel Lane?
Yes.
Counsel McCauley?
Yes.
Counsel Preston?
Yes.
Counsel Shan?
Yes.
Counsel Cameron?
Yes. That will lead us, I believe, we cleaned up all the late files and consent agenda items, that would bring us to committee items, Budget and Finance.
Nothing to report, we'll be meeting on Thursday.
Okay. Community Services? Counsel Preston?
Sorry, yes, motion to approve Appointment 560.
Second.
Sorry, caught a little off guard there, we never don't have something else coming out of Budget and Finance. Goodness. All right, Appointment 560 is Stacy McMillan to the Mayor Andrew R. Curtis Fund Committee. Ms. McMillan introduced herself to the committee and noted that she's been involved in the city, including the Ports-Parks Alliance, as well as the PTO for many years. We had a discussion about whether or not there were particular projects that she would like to focus on. She responded that she would think very broadly about the different projects that could be paid for by the fund, and assured, and wanted to focus on making sure that there was an objective process to vet the various projects. As with all the different committee, or sorry, appointment for the committee that came in front of us, we did note that the committee is advisory to the council and that the committee's decision or not binding. Ms. McMillan noted that she fully understands that. The committee voted three to zero for her appointment.
Counsel Lane?
I'm just curious on the next three appointments, if the committee addressed the fact that the cake's already baked on some of these funds for NY, for NYSS. So I, I mean, I'm going to tell you right now, I'm opposing one of them, possibly two, for that very purpose. I don't feel it's very fair to the city, because the cake is baked for NYSS, and there might be some other projects that are going to fall by the wayside. There is some serious special interest here, and I would like somebody with a more broad sense of community to look at things that are in the outside community, that where the best, best home for these funds would be, I guess you could say.
Counsel...
Yeah, so I purposely did not do all three appointments collectively, because I suspected that there might be some pushback in some of the different appointments. But, but as I mentioned, you know, there was a conversation about whether or not this particular applicant would be really focused on one particular project, or would be more open-minded, and she said that she would think broadly about this. In particular, I was going to bring it up, because it, just the way it fell out in conversation, but there actually was some conversation in committee, actually generated from one of the other members of the committee, one of the other counselors that's on the committee, about the fact that, you know, yeah, I think, to call the elephant in the room, you know, that there might be, you know, a lot of bias toward, particularly the RYS project, and there was discussion about the fact that since the referendum, you know, has passed, obviously, that, you know, that the funds wouldn't necessarily have to go for the RYS center, that it could be, those projects, other projects could be vetted for that particular purpose.
Counsel Lane?
There absolutely is a hundred percent elephant in the room, because to say that they're going to get a fair, the other things are going to get a fair shot in the city is just not true. You know, this was a funding source quoted by one of the, and it was a point of heartburn with the whole project, with myself and a lot of other people, that the money's already being spent, and it's not in the door yet, so. Her appointment, I, you know, I can see, I don't want to get in the way of people volunteering, I think it's great, but I just think that we really need to look at this a little bit more closely with some of the special interests that's involved with it, and the baking of Very frustrating.
Thank you. I hope my colleagues will join me in taking any breath before, you know, so as we move through the agenda and some of the items that we've already discussed. But, on the topic, as the chair said, I was the member of the committee who brought up the funding, having been discussed in earlier phases of the R.Y.S. project prior to the council's approval of the debt exclusion vote and the voters' approval of that. And I voiced that, I hope that the body that we're creating would consider alternative ways to invest this wonderful charitable opportunity for our city, given that we'd not go down a path of trying to cobble together funding to fund the rec center out of the general budget. So, just to put a finer point on that, and also to add, as the chair reminded, I think each of our appointments, as we've reviewed them in committee, this is a recommendation, this is not something that this committee decides without coming back to this body for a vote, similar to the conversation we had earlier on the CIP. So, I respect my colleagues' concerns and valid questions around some of the ways this has been discussed in the past, but I do think we've turned a page to some extent after May, and I look forward to seeing this group come together and what their recommendations will actually be on an annual basis, thank you.
Counsel Zee, and then Preston.
Yeah, I, I think it's how I like to talk about it, and I understand the vote and all that stuff, but I would just say that, you know, I have a bit of a differing, differing opinion, I think, you know, during the debt exclusion conversation, a lot of information was put forth, and several projections came out of the finance department as a matter of information, that there were certain monies that were being sort of counted on towards the budget, and everybody will remember, especially myself as budget chair, you know, the number of numbers that were shared, that were supposedly the debt amount, were all over the place, but for the most part, and spearheaded directly by the corner office, monies were estimated to come from this fund, at least for the first three years, that's in the public record, I didn't invent that, or I'm not stretching to make that the case, and that is part of the story that was told, again, for informational purposes, to the voters as they weighed their decisions, so I think, at least when I go to vote on the so-called recommendations and acceptance of the gift, the record meets the stand, and so at least for the first three years, I think the word that was given to the voters should be honored, and I hope that the committee will consider that. Beyond that, you know, that's, that's a different story, we did have a lot of conversation about dedicating the monies for thirty years, or the length of the bond, and all that kind of stuff, but that was even factored in, to my understanding, in the calculator, that was the center of much discussion during the conversation, so I will support the appointments, but I just wanted to say that on the record.
Counsel Preston?
Yeah, thank you, I also, I wanna make it a point that this is not relevant necessarily to the appointment themselves, but since we're going down this road, you know, I, I tend to agree with the counselor from Ward one, in fact, I wrote a letter to the editor as we came up to the debt exclusion vote, specifically pointing out that the calculator, tax impact calculator that was on the city website, specifically pulled out the monies from the Curtis Fund that were planned to be dedicated for this project, and, and I made it a point to say that that was, in my opinion, not a fair thing, since we didn't know where that money was going to be spent, we hadn't even developed the committee to, you know, allocate funds, or make recommendations on how to allocate the funds at the time. But, you know, having said that, in my personal opinion, and, you know, I'm not on this committee, and, and, you know, I looked to see what they would say, but I would look to get that tax relief around the project for the taxpayers across the city, and I would very much like to see these funds utilized in that way, at least for the first three years, as was stated by the administration, but again, that's not entirely up to me, but I'm just trying to say, you know, there are, there are two ways to think about this.
Counsel Khan?
Yeah, thank you, Counsel President, just on the appointment themselves, you know, I have some familiarity in just when this candidate has been before us on different topics, and I, and I really am very impressed, I think they would really bring a good value to this committee, so I will be supporting it, and supporting their appointment to the Curtis Fund, just definitely a known person, and we've seen them, and definitely a lot of respect for that, that professionalism I've seen, thank you.
Thank you, any more discussion on the appointment, Counsel Lane?
Yeah, like I said, I mean, you know, I don't wanna, you know, speak ill of anybody who wants to volunteer and give their time and be a part of it, I think it's more of my frustration of the overall feel of the way the whole thing has gone, so it's not personal, I'm, like, I will support this one, I'll speak to the others when they come up, so, you know, no offense, but that's just, it, it drives me nuts, so I have to say something, and I will take a deep breath like Counsel Harmon told me to do, but, you know, I always speak from the heart, and this just, seeing names that are very N.Y.S.-centric might trigger me just a touch, and I just wanna make sure that as a city, we don't suffer because of having our blinders on.
Any further discussion, Counsel Preston?
Sorry, me doing, I forgot to make one last point, it's just because I said it when we did the other appointees for this particular fund, just to remind all of us, so there are four residents on this particular committee, that we wrote the ordinance around the committee to try to get, well, to dictate that we even have representation from different wards across the city with the residents, of course, with only, well, with six wards and only four residents here, we do have two wards, which are Ward one and two, that are not represented by this, I have said many times, and I will say it again tonight, I very much hope that the council president, as he looks at the two appointees from the council that would be on this committee, that he would look to people that could represent Ward one and two.
I'll just add as a point of information, and not to participate in the deliberation, and once this is all settled, where, you know, where the appointees are coming from, if it still is one and two that are open, or if it changes, because this goes a different direction, I'll try to reflect that, the order doesn't say that the council president needs to name somebody from the remaining wards, but I definitely hear what counselors have been saying about it, so I would make that effort.
Ray Phelps.
Ray Phelps, sorry, Ray Phelps, we already, at our last council meeting, we were split between two different councils.
Thank you.
Yeah, right. Okay, further discussion on the appointment, five six zero, Stacy McMillan to Curtis Fund, any further discussion, roll call?
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Zee?
Yes.
Counselor Donahue?
Yes.
Counselor Granis?
Yes.
Counselor Harmon?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Motion to approve appointment five six one?
Second.
Yes, please, thank you.
So, this is Brian Callahan, also to the Mayor Andrew R. Curtis Fund Committee, Mr. Callahan introducing the committee, noting his fifteen years of involvement in the city, including the skate park, the PTO, school committee, and N.E.F., noting that N.E.F. operates in a very similar fashion as to how this committee would, would also operate. It's noteworthy that Mr. Callahan submitted documentation that attests that the State Ethics Committee has advised, and that he is able to serve on the committee because of the fact that he is an elected school committee member, and we also got documentation from the city solicitor confirming that his appointment would not be in conflict with the charter, the committee voted three to zero to recommend the approval of appointment five six one.
Thank you, discussion, Counsel Lane?
So, this individual is running for a council position, so if he does achieve that goal of being on the council, you will have to reappoint someone, as I understand?
Yeah, so that did come up in committee, both that he is an elected official, is a school committee member, as well as the fact that he has declared himself, and he did during the committee meeting, let us know that he has returned his papers to run for the Ward three seat, and so there was discussion about that, and he said that he would be willing to step down from the committee if he were to be elected to the council.
Further discussion?
So I think, I think, just as a point of order, I think that the city solicitor and the ethics board, if you lift out the school committee member and replace it with a city counselor, I think it's the same opinion, that they, that they're allowed to conduct both roles.
And the city counselors are not?
By, by what?
By the charter, the city counselors are not, it's, and in fact, the city solicitor gave an opinion, and it was different for school committee.
Counsel Preston?
Yeah, so that is indeed true, we did have a conversation about the fact, it's true, the charter does state that a city counselor cannot be in a role that would be involving the movement of money, and so he could not, as a counselor, be appointed to this as well, through that, so, that, it did come up, but, I mean, I have my own comments, but that's.
Counsel McCollum?
Yeah, so I, I have, I have nothing personal against the applicant, but I, I do think that the administration's kind of put us in an awkward spot here, in that as a school committee member is one thing, but now, you know, we are in election season, and it could be three months, the committee might not meet for another three months, blah, 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 the whole kind of thing, and rigmarole, and I just, you know, nothing against his community service, but there must be somebody else in Ward three who could be able to step up and offer the same level of commitment and service going forward, again, it's, I just, it's just, it's an elected position, an elected office, and I know the State Ethics had written probably something that was very nice, but on the other hand, it just, it doesn't sit well with me, that's all.
Thank you, Counsel Preston?
Yeah, thank you, so, you know, the mayor has stood in front of us when we first talked about the appointments, and told us about how there'd been a plethora of really great applicants across the city that were all very qualified for the committee, and that he had to turn down a lot of people, we in fact, met someone who came to the Planning and Development Committee, who had originally applied for this particular, and we put them on the Z.B.A. planning, I think it was Z.B.A.
Conservation Commission.
Conservation Commission, there you go. But, you know, so, and I did actually go to the mayor, and I asked him to reconsider this particular appointment because of the fact that this is an elected official who also had, you know, expressed at that point, and opinion, or a desire to run for council, and in the paper, he had actually said that, so I did ask the mayor to reconsider, either bring somebody else from Ward two, or Ward three, or bring somebody from Ward one or two into it, and that the mayor did decline that request from me at the time. You know, and we also had a great deal of debate when we developed the committee, when we put through that order, about whether or not to even allow elected officials on the committee at all, so, you know, it really boggles my mind as to why the mayor would in particular choose, you know, again, if he's got a plethora of qualified applicants for this particular role, why in particular he would bring forward a school committee member who has declared themselves for city council, so I too will be voting no on this particular application, I do want very clearly to state, though, it is in no way a reflection of the actual person, I think Mr. Callahan would be certainly qualified to do this as a person, however, because he is an elected official who has declared himself for city council, I'm not gonna say yes to this particular one.
Okay, any further discussion, Counsel Donahue?
Thank you, President, yeah, I just wanna add that in the committee meeting that we had with Mr. Callahan, the first thing that he stated was that the mayor asked him to join this, this ad hoc, it didn't sound like it was something that he sought out himself, so I'm a little perplexed as to how the mayor expressed receiving many applications, but a seemingly none from Ward three, where he had to reach out to someone himself, so that's a little curious to me. Secondly, you know, the, the conversation around elected officials being on this committee, to me, it's an ad hoc, which is a little different than, like, our commissions and boards, which very much are pretty much, you know, distinctly outlining in the charter that elected officials cannot be on boards or commissions as appointees, so it does beg the question, how do we end up with two city counselors being appointed to this, this ad hoc as well, and doesn't that beg the same argument? So, I, I do agree, administration has put us in a little bit of a pickle with this particular applicant, I have no personal issue with the applicant, I'm just pointing out my observations, so, yeah, there is sort of some, some catamarass direction here with, with how we're
Love that.
moving forward with the, the two council positions, if we can't figure out this one, I guess that's my point.
Counsel Khan?
Thank you, Counsel President, actually, a very interesting point, so this may be clarifying, and I'm trying to remember, this was an ad hoc formed by the council, or was, no, so this is a mayor's formed group, so, so the, the one thing, you know, obviously, we just formed the ad hoc from the council, and, you know, learned that anytime the council forms one, council members are the only voting members, and, and I think that's something, that was a good reminder, as we were thinking about the composition there. In this manner, I don't find it too alarming for the mayor to ask people, I think a lot of the boards and commissions have been mayors asking people, otherwise, a lot of people don't just come banging on the doors, like, saying, what could I do, where could I volunteer, sometimes that is part of the advocacy that the mayor does to fill these spots, so, but I hear what everyone has said here, but with that said, we do know at the end of this year, when that person's role is gonna shift over to the council, unless someone else is running in Ward three, that I, I don't have a problem with approving this, and knowing that when that time comes, that we would then be back here, and hopefully, by then, more people might find an opportunity to come to, or the mayor can ask other people, but I, I don't see this as, as that problematic, and I will be supporting it, thank you.
I just wanna add as a point of information, just, so, we approved back a year ago, so last June twenty twenty-four, order five eight two, which approved that non-judicial settlement, which we were all very, very involved in, seems like a distant memory, and, and it, part of that, there was an amendment, furthermore, in appreciation of the generosity of the Curtis family, et cetera, the city council, in collaboration with the mayor, establishes as part of this acceptance, special review committee, by order of the city council to review and recommend the spending of an annual gift allocation from the trustees, it did not specify how that special review committee would be created, I might have been the one who introduced, actually, I've got it right in front of me, so I can tell you, actually Counsel McCauley, and I, I remember us talking, Counsel McCauley sponsored the order which had originally different, five members instead of seven, it wound up seven through committee, and so one member of the administration, two members of the city council appointed by the city council president, was gonna be two members of the public, and then it became four members of the public, and we added each from a different ward, so that's sort of the history of how that, that all came, it was, I would say, a collaboration between the mayor's office and the council, and that's where we're at now, so I just wanted to remind ourselves of that. So Counsel Khan, Counsel Harmon? Further discussion, Counsel Zee, on the appointment?
I just, I wanna echo the, the chair's comments about consistency of the debate, you know, the, the concept that electeds, the argument at the time was that electeds create a different environment on the committees, they're maybe a little bit too strong-willed, if you will, or they operate in a different way, because they're used to being in all these meetings, or they're intimidating, whatever the case might be, so I, I do think being consistent matters, and it helps, again, make the compromises go, and so I'm not gonna oppose, but I do wanna point out that I feel like that is not consistent, they're not the same.
Further discussion on appointment five six one, all right, seeing none, roll call?
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Zee?
Yes.
Counselor Donahue?
Yes.
Counselor Granis?
Yes.
Counselor Harmon?
Yes.
Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Present.
Counselor Preston?
No.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes. Okay, that will get us to five six nine.
Motion to approve appointment five six one?
Second.
Thank you. So, appointment five six nine is Kim Turner to the Mayor Andrew R. Curtis Fund Committee. Before I start, it did, I just wanna note that it did come up in committee about whether or not this actually needed to come to the council for appointment, and, and it certainly had crossed my mind as a chair, but frankly, the administration did bring this to us, put it on our agenda, and so we, we decided that it probably made sense to just go through with it, but having said that, Ms. Turner is the mayor's appointee to the committee, and she has had fifteen years of public service, I think many of us know Ms. Turner, she's been involved with many different things, she was chair of the Parks Commission for many years. She, it feels it's important that it's to have a member of the mayor's staff on the committee so that they can have a broad view of the projects across the city, and help with the prioritization of the projects, we asked Ms. Turner about her vision of the structure of the committee, and she told us that since she has experience with both the CPC, as well as foundations, most notably the Moral Foundation, she has drafted a memo that the mayor is currently reviewing, which outlines her ideas about how to work with department heads to prioritize city projects to bring to the committee, she as well has had several conversations with the trustees of the Curtis Fund regarding their thoughts about projects, however, it was noted that in the order, which council president just referenced, it specifically mentions about public input for the projects, for the committee to be considering, and that, you know, we really should be making sure that we are soliciting input from the public, as opposed to just from the department heads. Also, oh, well, that was the conversation, then turned to the fact that since the, our, the R.Y.S. project was passed as a debt exclusion, that we should be considering utilizing funds from, for other projects, as opposed to just those projects around the R.Y.S. center, the vote, the, sorry, the committee voted three to zero to recommend approval of appointment five six nine.
Thank you, discussion? Counsel Khan, Counsel Khan, Counsel Lane?
Yeah, I, I think, first of all, this shouldn't be coming before us, anytime that the administration is, is allowed to, to select someone, that's not in our, and, so I, I really don't, I would actually change, not, I, I think this should be a receiving file, so I'm gonna just say that.
Okay, so the motion is to approve at the moment, Counsel Lane?
I'm just gonna give it one more bite at the apple, 'cause I have a lot of heartburn, and I don't have any tums in my drawer, this just, to me, I know a couple people that were interested in being on this, and saw a little bit of a background, people were very interested and very, really wanted to be part of this, this, this committee, who were turned off by the fact that they were just ignored or never responded to, so for, you know, a city that touts itself as being so inclusive, to see three names that are in the cool kids club really gives me heartburn, so my, what I just wanna say is be a little bit more careful of, you know, who you select on committees, and who wants to be involved, and open it up to people that are maybe outside the box and aren't involved quite a bit, and maybe it goes a little bit better.
Further discussion, Counsel Preston, bless somebody?
Thank you, so I just wanna note that Ms. Turner is here as the, the mayor's appointee, she's not here as a resident, she is here as the staff appointee from the mayor's administration.
That's fine, I'm making a general statement.
Counsel Harmon?
I would be open to receiving and filing and withdrawing my second if the motioner would like, I also plan to support it if we vote on it, so that's all.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, frankly, I, I am not passionate one way or the other. Yeah, I mean, frankly, I'm not passionate one way or the other. I don't, I'd be really surprised if this were to not pass, but I guess I should never, ever guess the will of the council, right? I mean, I don't know. I mean, since we've gone through the process, it's come through our agenda and everything else, I think it's probably most appropriate to just go forward with it as an approval. But I do think it is noteworthy that it probably did not need to come to the committee, but ultimately, the administration did put it into the agenda.
Okay. Counsel Zied?
Yeah, my radar is just up, as always, about the council versus the administration's role. So I mean, just because I've recently been researching this, you know, appointment powers are typically vested in the mayor with the consent of the city council. So I, I'm not sure I agree that it shouldn't have come, or that the mayor can put anybody they want onto, I mean, let's just use an extreme example, as is often used to sort of describe whether a law makes sense or something. I mean, what if the person is not from Newburyport, or what if the person doesn't vote here? And we've had these kinds of things, and we've gone to research and said, well, it doesn't say it has to be a voter of the city, does it not? So there are these factors. But I just think, very fundamentally, everything's based on a check and a balance. And so, and the way that this has been written, and the way the order was written, was that the city council formed this committee. So we are accepting somebody into a committee. And I understand that, you know, we're all going to be part of this continuum, right? There's going to be a recommendation to them, they're going to make a recommendation as to, or an offering of a gift, it'll be accepted, it'll be accepted here. So I'm not sure I agree, but if nobody wants to keep picking that fight, I'll let it go. But you draw my ire if you sort of try and kick the council out of the conversation every time.
Okay. Any further discussion? Roll call on Appointment 569?
Counsel Wright?
Yes.
Counsel Zied?
Yes.
Counsel Donahue?
Yes.
Counsel Harman?
Yes.
Counsel Khan?
Yes.
Counsel Lane?
Yes.
Counsel McCauley?
Yes.
Counsel Preston?
Yes.
Counsel Shan?
Yes.
Counsel Cameron?
Yes. Thank you. Counsel Preston, anything to add?
All that I had is, we will be meeting next Monday night, August 21st, or, August 21st, geez, July 21st. The only thing on our agenda is the Board of Health appointment that came in tonight.
Thank you.
Which is going to PWS.
What's that?
Which is going to PWS.
No, that's the Board of Health.
No, you're getting...
Yes, Board of Health went to PWS.
Yeah, that one's the one that I'm left with?
Not it.
Maybe I'm lying. All right.
We'll figure it out. Okay.
Oh, it's the Parks Commission. Sorry, we have a Parks Commission, yeah, for Parks Commission, sorry.
All right. General Government, nothing to report. We'll meet in a couple of weeks. We might need to talk about scheduling, that's the first night of Yankee Homecoming, but I'll discuss that with my colleagues, or we stick with it. Licenses and permits?
Thank you, Counsel President. Like a motion to approve Application 269.
Second.
This is an application for a renewal of a sign permit for Charleston and Cocoa. The applicant appeared before us via Zoom. She indicated that this is actually a group of signs for the various businesses that are up the area of State Street from Pleasant and above, to try and direct traffic up to that area for them. All of the paperwork and everything was in order, and the committee voted to approve this 3 to 0, oh, sorry, 2 to 0.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Counsel Donahue?
Thank you. Well, I wasn't able to make the meeting, but is this the one that is, that they place near Richdale, it's kind of on the corner, kind of in that area where the bump out is?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so was there any questions about, like, placement, consistent placement? Because I've gotten complaints about it, so I was just kind of curious if that came up at all.
We did discuss that with the applicant, and they agreed that they should keep a thorough fair available to everybody to get by the sign and leave enough space for pedestrian access.
Okay, so we're made aware that that's kind of an issue?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none, do a voice vote and an application. All right.
Renewal.
Hmm?
Renewal.
Renewal.
It's a renewal.
I can't, renewal, yeah. I thought you were saying roll. All right, all those in favor, Application 269, A-Fram, movable sign, Charleston and Cocoa, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? No, okay. 11 to 0. Counsel Wright?
Motion to approve Application 217. Right. So this is an application from the Winter Circle Running Club for the High Street Mile. The applicant appeared before us via Zoom. It's essentially the same as it's been in previous years. This is part of the, well, it's not officially part of Yankee Homecoming, it's conducted on the same, in the same time period. The interesting thing that's different this year is that in previous years, they had multiple heats, so they run the mile in multiple heats. They're planning to do it all in one, in one heat this year. And so they'll have much less of an impact on all the crossroads, where all the volunteers staff the crossroads to help with traffic. The road isn't technically closed during the, during the race, but there is, there is volunteers that make sure that the crossroads are manned for the length of the road race. And again, this was approved of Committee 2 to 0.
Any discussion? Thank you for that explanation. Okay, hearing none, voice vote, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Okay, 11 to 0. Thank you. Anything further? Counsel Wright?
Nothing, nothing further. We'll do the calendar for our next meeting. It might be delayed by a week to accommodate budget and finance change.
Thank you. Lead us to Planning and Development?
Yes, thank you, Counsel President. Nothing to come out of committee tonight. We will be meeting Wednesday night with the Planning Board, the joint hearing for the two zoning amendments for Wards 3 and 5 for Low Street. That's this Wednesday night. And then next Tuesday night, we'll probably meet just to continue the conversation on signage and the rental housing, just to bring back what we've learned in the last few weeks. So, and Mr. Bous's appointment. So, that's it, repending.
All right, thank you. Counsel McCauley, Public Works and Safety?
Nothing tonight, but we have a busy agenda. We've got a number of appointments going on. I probably will hopefully amend my time going a little earlier, right after community service next Monday.
Thank you. Good of the order. Counsel Harman, Counsel Zied, and then I have a couple of things.
Thank you. Most of us are aware that Joe DBA's likes to refer to budget season as the best time of the year, the most wonderful time of the year. For me, although I grew up here, the homecoming is the best and most wonderful time of the year. So I just wanted to wish my colleagues and members of the public a safe and happy Yankee Homecoming, since we won't meet before that.
Counsel Zied?
Yeah, it's not the happiest time of the year, but, okay. He's never served on. Yeah. I just want to expand upon something we talked about earlier, since Good of the Order is really the time for how council business runs. So I just want to say that the late files are very challenging. And again, I just want to kind of flesh out my thoughts here, mine, of course, because we take votes on late files. But the rule is, you know, you can have something on the agenda that's inside of the 48, if it's not reasonably anticipated by the chair. That's the OML. So I think that's the open meeting law. I think generally, that's been the, sort of, the logic around saying, I call them, on the desk, late files, which we used to have literally on the desk, you'd walk in and you'd have things. I really think the era of those is done. I think, but there's a distinction there, that there's also a late file, which comes in after the formal deadline of 4:00 p.m. on the Tuesday prior to council, which, by the way, the clerk's office, I think, would like us at some point to reconsider, you know, with the three-week cadence, just trying to open these things up a little bit because of the amount of time it takes to assemble the packet. So there's a gap there between 4:00 p.m. on Tuesday and when the packet goes out, 48 hours in advance, which, which I think late files personally, again, are okay, at least, I'll have to be voted on as a late file because they are technically a late file. So I just want to explain my thinking on this, because after some recent emails and conversations, I did, that's the research that I did, and that's sort of how I'll be thinking about them. And if there's really a bona fide, you know, if you have a, I don't know, a generator blow up on a Friday, yeah, okay, you couldn't reasonably have anticipated meeting a transfer on that Monday. But I think we would probably agree that generally, that's a narrowing, narrowing and narrow window in the first place. So that's just my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Khan?
Yeah, thank you, Counsel President. I just want to request, you know, on behalf of, like, our relationship with our attorney, is that if there's any training on open meeting laws, I know they offer training, and I think I would love to see us in fall have something on open meeting law and on other aspects that have come up, I think, over the last 12 months that we've been seeing and needing assistance with. So I would really encourage Counsel President to maybe find a time, and that we, as counselors, could attend that kind of training that we know they offer, and they've mentioned many times. Thank you.
Thank you, yeah. And that could include Roberts Rules of Order as well, which I think would be helpful. Clerk, yes?
May I, just a quick minute? So to Counsel Zied's point, so your rules state that 4:00 on a Tuesday is when, for your rules, they come in, but open meeting law, it's 48 hours in between. So that 48, so that time between 4:00 p.m. on a Tuesday and, say, 4:00 p.m. on a Thursday, it's late by your rules. After 6:00 o'clock on a Thursday, it's late by open meaning, at least, it's late by state law. So that's where the kind of rubber meets the road on that. So if you have something that's coming into us on a Wednesday, or if the administration does on a Thursday, but we get it in time to make it into the agenda that we post, and that packet that goes out with it, it's good. It's late by your rules, and you'll see it in that late file piece of your agenda. But if it's coming in Friday or Monday, it needs to be a boiler's, falling apart or something. Yeah, that's kind of the difference.
Thank you. Thank you, clerk, for that. Yeah, I had two items, both fun, in the spirit of Yankee Homecoming, we've all been invited, dear city council member, to Old Fashion Sunday, which is 11:30 Sunday, the 27th, at the Mall. I know many of you, or all of you, have been to that in the past. Great, great time to get together, so hope to see you there. And lastly, I would be remiss without going out on a high note to note that one of our members had a birthday yesterday, so I'm not going to release the year of birth, but Heather Shan had a birthday yesterday, so a happy birthday, Counsel Shan. Anyone want to sing? Got a, no, okay. So I'd entertain a motion to adjourn?